Good morning, and I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we come to you today, God, with just open arms for your love and blessings for our city. God, we ask that you be with all of us that are making decisions today on behalf of the city and on behalf of our citizens. God, just give us the right kind of minds and the right kind of attitudes to have a good day. Father, we ask you to be with those that are less fortunate, those that are suffering, those that are in the hospital, and those that have lost loved ones, God. Comfort them as only you can. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the city council meeting that was held July 26.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of July 22 through the 28.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
We do not have any proclamations, but we'll ask Fire Chief Reed to come forward. He's going to give us some information concerning opiate. I know we have, we talked about a lawsuit, and so this is a question that he's answering concerning opiate and other things that involve, not the lawsuit, but just involve...
Not the lawsuit. I'm not speaking towards the lawsuit at all. I'm Will Reed. I'm the Fire Chief for the City of Gadsden. Councilman Cannon had asked me to present some numbers. I'm going to preface this, if the council will let me, with a few more numbers for the Fire Department explaining how we come to these numbers. So, the Gadsden Fire Department is the primary provider of emergency medical services to the citizens of the City of Gadsden as ordered by our city ordinances. Our department provides emergency advanced and basic life support service to anyone in need of such care in this city. We do not provide transportation services to the patients to the hospital. These are provided by private ambulances, so in addition to us, they also are running these opiate calls. Those services provided by private ambulance with the distribution of our fire stations and our medics in the city, our Fire Department can have medics on the scene quicker than the ambulances just because of our distribution and them being at hospitals or running other calls. But we do appreciate the services of both ambulance services of the city. Partnership between us and them has been proven to save lives. In 2021, the Fire Department responded to 8,529 recorded incidents. That does not include our burn permits, building inspections, pre-fire plans, public assistance, special events like the Barbarian Challenger, Riverfest, such as that. That would bring our total patient contacts and fire contacts to over 10,000, but those are not recorded as runs, those are recorded as others. So that's 8,529 runs. Thirty-five percent of our calls are fire and related incidents. Sixty-five percent of our calls are medical incidents. That brings the number of our medical calls to just north of 5,500 a year. It was like 5,540 something calls. To give you the number of opioid calls that Gadsden Fire has administered Narcan on will not give you the full story. The reason of that is not all overdoses, patients are given Narcan. Some opioid overdoses, they're not given Narcan. This is due to the patient's condition, the amount and type of drug that we're giving the Narcan for, and the fact that the ambulance services may give Narcan after they leave the scene. If we treat a patient and the patient has good vital signs and they're breathing good, we do not administer Narcan because it's not indicated according to state protocols. However, sometimes patients' conditions may deteriorate throughout the hospital, they may give Narcan. They may give Narcan before we get there. Some law enforcement agencies in the county also carry Narcan. So if they have given the Narcan before we get there, there's no use in us giving more Narcan. In addition to this, a number of opioid overdoses are deceased on our arrival. So for us to go back and pull that information, all I'm pulling up is how many deceased patients we had in a given timeframe. It's not telling me if they were an opiate overdose or not. So, the hard numbers I can give you today. This year so far, as of today's date, we have given 49 doses of Narcan. Last year, for the entire year, we gave 41 doses. So y'all can tell it's a significant increase. Again, that doesn't tell the whole story. To get the entire story, we would have to get the ambulances, how much Narcan that they administered, with the Sheriff's Department or the other agencies that pass through the city that have, we have on numerous occasions pulled up, and there'll be law enforcement giving Narcan when we arrive. But it is still a significant problem. And if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Does our police department carry Narcan?
I don't believe they do. No, sir, they do not. And there is special training required to carry the Narcan. It wouldn't be as simple as just handing a law enforcement officer the Narcan because there are certain conditions that mimic an opiate overdose that you would not want to give Narcan for, so.
Thank you. I was just curious.
Oh, absolutely. There any other questions?
Are we losing any medics? Do we have enough medics now?
That's a loaded question, Councilman.
Well, I want to know that answer.
Been a lot of those today.
Yeah, that's a loaded question. If I had full staff of medics, I would tell you we don't have enough medics, but we've had to make some changes and some adjustments on how we staff trucks with medic personnel due to the shortage of medics. We're not running the amount of medics that we have in the past, no, sir.
So what are you doing? You having a medic and a basic EMT?
On rescue trucks. Sometimes, yes, sir, we will put a paramedic and an EMT on there. Where in the past, we did run two paramedics on there.
What about the ALS trucks?
Sir?
The ALS trucks?
The advanced life support trucks. I have five advanced life supports. Three of them's engines, two of them's rescue. All of them have to run a minimum of at least one paramedic to be advanced life support.
Well, maybe we can help y'all soon.
Thank you. There any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Chief. We will continue with our agenda this morning, our unfinished business. We have an ordinance rezoning of property located at 1804 East Side Drive in District 5 from a R1, one-family resident district to a B1 neighborhood business district. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading, and the owner plans to rent the property for commercial use. The planning commission recommended approval. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Madam President, I just want to add one thing as a point of privilege there. Almost all of the properties directly adjacent to this are already zoned. Me too, so.
It's just getting in line with the rest of...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ordinance, the next ordinance is rezoning property located at 2113 Uren Avenue in District 2 from a B2 general business district to an R1, one-family resident district. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading, and the owner would like to sell the property for a single-family residential use. The planning commission recommend approval. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1120 Litchfield Avenue in District 1. Terry B. Smith in care of Terry B. Smith, Floyd B. Uren, and Sheila Barton, Uren, Erin, I'm sorry, in care of Terry B. Smith being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, if you'll give us your name and your address at the podium, please.
Terry Smith. I live at 2501 Nakalula Road.
Yes.
I need more time to work on this house. Had a real busy past year, and all it amounts to is giving me more time to make improvements on it.
Okay. How much time are you asking?
Well, when it comes to doing work on a house, it's hard to pin it down as far as time. There's a lot of considerations.
In this council, in doing this, we only start with 30 days, of giving you 30 days.
Yeah.
And after then, if there's any improvements, there may be a continuation. That's the reason why I asked you, how much time did you need?
It's hard to say how much time. Thirty, 30 days, you say, was the minimum?
That we start with.
Right. And, you know, if it was a simple project of replacing a window, then that could be done. But the house was set on fire back a year and a half ago, once a tenant had vacated property temporarily to go somewhere. She came back to find it on fire, and so it suffered some damage in the living room area from fire and smoke damage throughout the house. So it's a major project.
Yeah. Well, we need to hear, we're going to hear from our building department, and then we can make a decision as to the time or if time is given or not.
Okay.
Is there anyone in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in August of last year. There was a building permit taken out in December. There's no action whatsoever been taken on that permit. There are no improvements. We're recommending today that you pass a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
This is just out of curiosity. You can come back to the part, this is just out of curiosity. So when was it that this, that the fire occurred?
The fire occurred in February, a year and a half ago.
Year and a half ago.
Approximately.
All right. So was there an insurance claim filed at that time?
I did not have insurance. The work that has been done has gone on inside the house, which isn't, you know, noticeable from the road. But if you drive down the road and you look at the house, it doesn't look any different than it did before it was set on fire. I mean, it's not like it's an eye hazard or nuisance in that respect.
That's all I have.
And the work I have done has, like I say, been on the inside. So he said, he didn't, he didn't know of any work that had been done there, but yes, there has been work.
I do know, Mr. Smith, and from the photograph, it appears to me that outside is not all that bad, but he has to understand that if he'll clean that up outside and get it presentable, the 30 days that you're asking for doesn't mean that you've got 30 days to do it all. It means you've got 30 days to get to making improvements on the outside, start on the inside, and then come back and talk to Mr. Harbison about continuing on with the construction of it.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
That's what they're doing. So I would just ask for that.
According to what Mr. Harbison just said, he said that there was no work had been done. When was the last time you did, started working on the house? Or when was the last time that you worked in the house?
The last time I worked in the house was probably this spring. I've suffered a loss of a brother, a loss of a mother, and several other things have gone on this past year that have occupied my time otherwise. It's not like I'm ignoring this project altogether. It's just, you know, you can only do so much.
Terry, where do you work?
Where do I work?
Yes, what do you do?
I don't work right now.
Okay. But you work what?
Well, I've been several things. Last employment I had, I was an x-ray technologist.
Yeah. What are your plans for the house?
Want to put it back together and rent it back out or sell it. I mean, it's, it was a nice house, and it can be again. It's just a matter of getting in there and doing the work. And it would be beneficial to the city, I believe, to have it fixed up rather than tear it down.
It would.
The day, the month that I paid the house off, it was set on fire. So...
Is the fire damage, the picture, I can't tell. Is it structural, Mr. Harbison, or is it just cosmetic fire damage? Was it...
Well, it was arson. Somebody set holes, set fire in front of the fireplace, and it burned holes in the floor, and it burned up the fireplace on one side and into the ceiling a little bit.
That's insane.
And around the entry door.
So have you been able to do like a cost analysis to see how much money it'll take to get it back to where you want it versus how much you can get for it?
No.
Or how much rent you can get for it?
No, sir. I haven't done a cost analysis.
Well, we see that from time to time, is why I was asking. Sometimes you can do a lot of work and put a lot of money in something, and then you're, I think what's called upside down in the house, which is not a good program, obviously.
Right.
So, you know, I'm not trying to run your business, I'm just thinking, that's why I asked, if you had maybe done a study or an analysis on, is it worth fixing up to, and if you've got $50,000 in it, but it's worth $35,000, you know, should you pursue it or, you know, or could you get enough rent to pay the money that you've invested in it? And I don't do that kind of work. I'm just, but I'm asking to see if you could...
I don't mind doing that.
Mr. Harbison's a good resource. His department has that kind of ability. If you have time, maybe to sit with him to see, he might give you some guidance on something like that. But to your point a minute ago, you're right. We need housing in Gadsden, so I would hate to see it not be there.
Right.
So I appreciate you wanting to fix it up.
Well, I have fixed up many houses and given rent, rental places for a lot of people over the years.
Sure. Yeah.
Mr. Smith, I am very aware that life gets in the way.
Right.
But according to these pictures, and I'm not the one to say, but these pictures are dated July 28, and the inside, we have a picture, I'm looking at the picture of an inside, and it's a lot, a lot of damage on the inside. And you said you were working on the inside, but it's really up to this council, but this is a lot, this is a lot right here that, this picture shows a lot.
Can I see the pictures?
Mr. Smith, can you tell us how many rentals you have now?
I've got eight properties, five of which I'm owner-financing, two people who cannot go to a bank and borrow money and finance it otherwise. And then I've got two that are put out of commission right now due to the arson on this one house and the renter just destroying the house in another case.
I know Mr. Smith's had a bunch of houses. He'd bought some material 20 years ago for me for some of the houses, and I know he usually does what he says he's going to do, working on them.
What is the pleasure of the council?
We can give you 30 days. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Like they say, start on the outside first and get with Mr. Harbison.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1333 Stillman Avenue. This is in District 2. I guess this is Tuscaloosa LLC, subject to a mortgage in favor of Mutual Savings Credit Union, subject to a mortgage in favor of First Bank Alabama being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in August of last year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to, move to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1010 Avenue G in District 3, and this is M&amp;M Rental LLC being the last known owners. Is there anyone speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in August of last year. There've been no improvements, and there are no permits to improve, and we're asking
What is the pleasure...
Move to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 921 Avenue H in District 3, and this is Marilyn E. Jackson being the last known owner. Is there anyone speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there one speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in August of last year. There was a building permit taken out in October. There've been no improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 3516 Forest Avenue, and this is in District 6. This is Don and Juanita Berkeley, subject to the right and redemptions of Charles D. Davis and Sandra A. Davis being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If you'll come and give your name and your address, please.
My name is Don Berkey. We live at 2200 Clayton Avenue, Gadsden.
Okay. All right.
We purchased this property at tax sale, got a permit to start doing work on it. We've done substantial work, well, here, you can, there's $4,600, $4,642 worth of improvements we've done thus far. We replaced windows, roof edge, soffit. I replaced bricks that were falling off the wall, put a lot of mortar where it was necessary. We stopped working on it because the previous owners paid the back taxes and said they were going to redeem it. But when they found out how much work we had done on it, they said they were not going to redeem it to us personally, but the revenue department said, well, they can still redeem it until the end of the year since they've already paid the back taxes, and they recommended we not do any more work on it until we find out if they are going to redeem it or not. So I stopped work on it, other than mowing the grass and hauling some garbage away and cutting a limb, a large limb that had fallen on the, on the fence. We, we did do that since that time, but otherwise, I've, I stopped working on it because they were trying to redeem it. But I still want the house. I certainly don't want to spend over $4,000 and, and have the place torn down. I would like time to work on it, and if, if they say, go ahead and, and work on it, but I was told to stop work on it because they were redeeming the property. That's the only reason I stopped.
Where are you, where are you now as far as redeeming the property? Where are you all at now?
Okay. They had three years to redeem it. This, what is it, March is, is the end of the three years, and we'll, we'll have a clear title on it. So half a year away from having clear title in our name.
So you kind of want to take that chance and spend more money?
I think the property is well worth it. It's a nice house, once it's fixed up. I mean, I've already spent $4,000 on it, over $4,000. I don't want to lose all of that.
Mr. Berkey, are you, have you retained real estate counsel to help you navigate any of this?
No.
Okay. I mean, again, I'm no attorney, but what's going to happen after you eclipse that third year is you'll get a tax deed.
A tax deed, yes.
And then, and then you're going to have to take that, and you'll, you'll have to secure title.
Right.
Which generally involves some kind of quick claim deed process, and you'll need, you'll need an attorney for that.
Yeah. Mr. Copeland has done that for us in the past on other properties.
Yeah. So he, you know, he, and, you know, I know Mr. Copeland. He'll be a great resource to help you kind of navigate whether or not this is worth, worth dealing with. But in the meantime, you're kind of in the line of fire right now as far as this, this stuff goes.
Yeah.
So please be sure to have a conversation with that gentleman right there.
Yeah.
And he'll give you some guidance on how to, how to navigate it.
Yeah.
He's not going to steer you wrong.
The revenue department is, are the ones that told me to stop working on it because it was being redeemed. It wasn't the, the building department. But if they say, go for it, I will continue work. I mean, the outside is, is very close to being done.
Yeah. And, and make, make sure you get you a good typed version of this because in the, in the event that the original owner is successful in redeeming it, you'll need to petition the courts and get your money back.
Yes.
Because you'll have the ability to do that.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
Yeah. So...
So, so today, what are you, what are you asking us today?
Oh, I definitely want time to fix it up. I will start on it tomorrow if, like I said, the outside is nearly complete, almost completely done. Just some very minor things left.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Those who speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in August of last year, and Mr. Berkey left out one important note. We were there with the police department at his request. He had squatters in the house. They had destroyed the inside. So we moved them out. There was a building permit taken out in October. As far as we can tell, there's no work been done. There's furniture outside, there's television in the backyard, there are limbs and debris scattered around. Those pictures... Those pictures were taken five days ago. We're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
May I ask you something else?
Yes, come on.
Those squatters, quote unquote, was one of the daughters of the lady that owns the house. They are the ones that paid the back taxes trying to redeem it. And yes, I did call. They are the ones. I cleaned up the yard nicely. They came after they paid the redemption on the back taxes. They came and started throwing all kind of garbage, which he took a picture of and mentioned, in the backyard. They burned some of it, but not nearly all of it. But they made a terrible mess after they moved in, and that's why I called for help to get them out, because even though they had paid the back taxes, the building was still condemned, and you can't live in a condemned building.
Okay. Mr. Harverson, is this a demolition of the house, or is it to clean up around the area?
It's the house.
It's the house.
Okay.
Mr. Berkey?
Yes?
I've seen your working stuff, and I know the work you do in your houses. I want to make a motion that we give you 30 days on this house. If you'll promise me you'll go up there and clean that yard out and clean all that stuff inside that house completely out and finish the outside so we can get off the condemned list. You have 30 days, and if you don't do it within 30 days, and if that hasn't been done, I'm going to push for an abatement. Is that okay with you? You can start tomorrow, correct?
Yes, we can do that.
I mean, you spent $4,000, so I don't, you know, I don't think it's going to cost that much more to clean the yard and fix the outside.
No.
You know, get it presentable, and then you can, you know, you can go from there if that's agreeable with this council, you know?
The yard was clean, but when she came in, it just trashed it all over again. But we haven't done anything because they told us not to, so...
Ma'am, what revenue department told you all to stop?
Oh.
Was it the City of Gaston Revenue Department?
That's Edgewall County.
Oh, Edgewall County, yeah. That's...
Yeah, and that's why we haven't done anything. It's real trash, and yes, we agree, and we're willing to do it tomorrow.
Yeah, just start tomorrow and get everything in that house out of there, and, you know, you'll have to haul it off yourself. We don't pick up any condemned stuff, you know? Make the yard inside and outside, just, you know, go at it, because I don't want to see you lose your foot.
We have to kind of tape it where so that we can go on the property again and do all that.
Yeah, you'll need to, again, you'll probably need to secure legal counsel to help you navigate that piece of it, because if they have paid the taxes and technically redeemed the property, then it's no longer...
Well, they haven't redeemed it because part of the redemption is paying what we invested in it.
Yeah, the revenue department may be able to give you some direction on how you can legally go on the property, yeah.
Lee, can you tell us anything about this right here, how this would work? Since he's got that, the lien on it, and the people has paid the back taxes for one year?
Well, I'm really not supposed to give legal advice.
I mean, I was just, just for the council's advice. I don't know. This is one that hadn't came up for me.
Well, I mean, typically, redeeming, you'll have to pay, because he held the right to the property when he bought it for the taxes. And so, when all the property made improvements, then you have, in order to the family redeeming, they have to pay him back, the value of his improvements plus interest. Now, I'm getting conflicting information here about, you know, the paperwork due to what and how the transaction came in. I'd have to go through that and determine whether he has a right to the property, but since it's made improvements, it probably does, we'll probably sit down with Mr. Cogan and give Mr. Cogan the exact scenario of what's going on against the divorce.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. What is the...
Since this is a conflict here with everybody, I'd make a motion we give him 30 days to try to figure something out, and if they can figure something out, to go ahead and clean the outside and make the house presentable.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
The next item is appointing election officers, and this appoints poll workers for the main election on August 23 and the runoff election on September the 20th, if necessary. It also authorized the use of 20 DS 200 vote counting machine. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Madam President, if I could, before we talk, I'm not going to oppose this, but I would like, if possible, for the city clerk to explain what the qualifications are to be a poll officer or an election officer. They have to be residents of the district, whether they're an officer or just citizens of Gadsden. Can you just give me a 30,000-foot view?
I can. In municipal elections, the election officials that work the polls on Election Day do have to be a resident of the district and the voting box in which they are going to work. They must be registered voters as well. They can't just live. They do have to be a registered voter, and I certainly ask that all of the poll workers present a neutral and detached polling place on Election Day. Of course, as the clerk, it's my responsibility to protect the integrity of our election system, and so we try to make sure that that extends to our election officials as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
These are some fine folks. They really are. They're some of our finer people.
Move to the... Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is granting easement to Alabama Power Company. This is to provide service to the new Industrial Development Authority's office at the venue. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing application and acceptance of an ADIM or ADM grant. This is for application, acceptance, and administration of a grant through the Alabama Department of Environmental Management Recycling Program, and the amount is $22,518. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have a first reading. This is an ordinance that amend the fiscal year budget 2022 budget. This reflects receipt and appropriation of the grant through the Alabama Department of Environmental Management for the purchase of a pickup truck for the recycling center, and the amount is $22,518. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. New business.
I have one, Madam President. This comes from the Engineering Department. This is a resolution awarding bid number 3480 Oakview Avenue Drainage Improvements. It's for $62,594.29 was the responsible bid. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have two. One's a Resolution 300. It's a resolution authorizing one-time lump sum payment to eligible retirees, pensioners, beneficiaries of deceased retirees and pensioners of the City of Gaston. That's a resolution. The next one is Ordinance 301. It's an ordinance amending fiscal year 2022 to provide the funds of $251,624 to cover that retirement benefit. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both the resolution and the ordinance today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Now move to adoption. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution and the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain, please.
Abstain, please.
Due to the fact that I draw a state retirement check from the city.
We have two council members abstaining. Motion carries to adopt both the resolution and the ordinance.
Okay. We have a department report. We're asking Mr. Williamson to come, Director of Engineering, to give us an update on projects.
Thank you, ma'am. I've got the sheets I'll pass around to you that I'll talk from, if you don't mind taking one and passing it down. Give y'all just a second to get that in your hand. So these are the general construction projects that are currently active, as I'll go through them. Not touching on the, I hadn't planned to touch on the drainage projects today, as there's another pretty extensive list for that one, but these are all other projects combined. So if I don't mention something, please, by all means. We do have projects ongoing outside of this list, so if you have a specific question, obviously, about anything on the list or one that you don't see, let me know, and I'll be happy to answer everything best I can. To expedite, I'll be happy to go through this format however you'd like me to. Normally, I just mention the project, I'll give you a quick update, and then however you would like to guide questions, so be it. So number one, Fire Station Number 7. This is our new station down in District 5 at the Banks Park area. Construction is 99% complete. We're currently waiting on the HVAC system. As with many of our projects, material supplies have been an issue. Literally, if you hadn't been by, suggest going by. We have not completed our punch list inspections yet, but concrete's in place, asphalt, obviously the building, everything looks fantastic. The contractor has a temporary HVAC unit, and so we just need our permanent one. And once we do that, we'll be good to go. Number two, CDBG Street Resurfacing Project. This one's in construction. It's about 52% complete as it continues through the city. Next, number three, our city street resurfacing project. This is the non-CDBG that's paid with our local tax funds from the gas tax. As you know, this project was awarded recently, so the contractor's currently obtaining his insurance and bonds and ready to proceed once we get that in place. Number four, the Megan Boulevard Hood Avenue Intersection Improvements. This is the A-Trip 2 project that was awarded through the Department of Transportation. Right now, this letting has been moved back to early next year. We have obtained the right of way. We've removed the sign or relocated the sign at Walgreens. As we continue that process, we have some funding issues. As ALDOT has continued in their design through the course of that, the construction costs essentially doubled through our material increases, and so because of that, we are petitioning the A-Trip 2 Committee to increase our funding. We can't do that without going through their proper procedures, which would push it back to early next year. Everything else is fine with that one otherwise. South 11th Reconstruction Project from Black Creek Parkway to the Bridge. So this project has been awarded by ALDOT. We've paid our city matching funds. Most of the utility relocations have been completed. I know from, or at least the major work from Alabama Power Company, Spire has relocated their mains, and the Water Works is preparing to move in and relocate theirs, which is the last major one. And so once Alabama Power removes theirs or relocates theirs, I'm sorry, you'll also have AT&amp;T and Comcast, and everybody will be out of the way. The next step for us is a pre-construction meeting that is set by ALDOT. I'll get the firm dates once I'm notified from that, but that has not occurred yet. Next is the South 11th Partial Realignment that runs from the new bridge over Black Creek up to Randall Street. That is in formal design now. Initial survey work's complete, so as it progresses, I'll be able to update you accordingly. Hickory Street Bridge Replacement's currently scheduled for construction in 2023. This is the one that we need the South 11th Reconstruction to complete before we take that bridge out of service for it to be reconstructed, as it is on the detour route, so we don't want two primary routes out of service at the same time. Number eight, Gadsden Sports Park Phase 1. This one is substantially complete. We are working internally on the punch list, as you guys addressed that recently at a meeting, and I believe a ribbon-cutting announcement will be made very soon. Gadsden Sports Park Phase 2 is in construction at approximately 60% complete. Everything's going great so far, actually laying some side today along with some additional concrete work. Hopefully, everybody get a good personal shot of that at the ribbon-cutting for Phase 1, but it is progressing well. Gadsden Sports Park Phase 3 is in design, currently preparing for bid this month. As I get those plans, we'll put that bid package together and get it in advertisement just as quickly as we can. Oscar Adams Elementary Traffic Flow Improvement Project. This is the access road to relieve the traffic congestion in their peak times. Construction started last week, started the earthwork portion of that, the demolition portion of that, and so far, everything's fine with that one as well. Hillsborough Drive Resurfacing Project. This was the second one that we partnered with Commissioner Washington, the Edgewall County Commission, on. That one is actually waiting on a water replacement. We've got everything in place contractually. Resurfacing contractor is making his preparations to move in, but we were notified by the Water Works to hold on just a minute, let us get an old main replaced, which we by far agree with and are thankful that they'll move in to do that prior to the resurfacing. So that's scheduled to happen any day now. As soon as that happens, within a week or two, I think we'll be back to the actual resurfacing of that road. Riverwalk at Couso Landing. This is the bank stabilization I had talked about a little bit in the past. We do have our shoreline permit obtained for that. We are actually working with ADM to look at some grant funds possibly. So before we jump into a major, very costly repair with stabilizing the bank, this actually follows the boardwalk just downstream of Buffalo Wild Wings from the heavy floods that we had over the recent years, recent past couple of years. It certainly eroded that area, so we, like I said, have a possible partnership there, so we would like to navigate through that, just to see what we can do to work through the financial outfall of that. Number 14, Broad Street Bridge Renovation. We are preparing documents for an October bid letting. As we proceed through this next budget cycle, this is obviously one of our major infrastructure issues that we'll have to deal with, so we're preparing that. The IDA office space in the undeveloped portion of the venue is in construction. It's about 25% complete. So far, all is going well with that one also. Number 16, moving up to the Nakalula Falls area. We've got the train track improvements. It is in construction. I'd say by paper, about 15% complete, but really, the demolition has happened. The grading contractor is on site now, making the drainage improvements, and then they'll have a second crew that comes in and sets the actual new track. So a couple minor issues there, nothing major so far. Number 17, Nakalula Falls Park Train Track Electrical Upgrades. This is the necessary improvements to accommodate the electric trains with the charging stations that have to come in, so that one's progressing at the same time as well. Nakalula Falls RTP Grant. This is the gorge steps that we've been working on. We are working through the environmental assessment and approvals. Once we obtain those, and we're really close to having that, we have some Indian tribe concurrences that are required, and once we gain that, we'll be free to start the bid process and go ahead with construction. Let's see. Number 19, ALDOT, the TAP Grant for Downtown Sidewalk Improvements. This one remains in design. We'll have a bit of right-of-way acquisition that will need to begin soon, and we'll review that with ALDOT before I can recommend anything to you guys to proceed, so it's continuing. CND Landfill Boundary Expansion. This remains in ADM review. This is the overall boundary expansion. I expect, depending on how our rate of infill goes, Cell 3 will begin to fill up, and we'll need to expand it probably in the next couple of years, but this is the overall boundary expansion, not just the current cell that we're working in. So Low Head Dam Removal Project. I got an update this morning from our Fish and Wildlife Partnership. The agreement's in place. Construction right now is scheduled around fall. The contractor that the Fish and Wildlife has worked with to move in and remove the dam has a couple of projects and items he needs to complete before he can mobilize in, so we'll keep close in contact with them. Senior Wellness Center, the Elliott Community Center, the asbestos abatement is complete. That contractor moved out, I believe it was last week. We boarded up some windows where they had to take out to complete that process, so right now, everything is on track for, I believe, we'll be ready to bid this one in September. That's what our target timeline is. Six Street Pool Pump and Filtration System Repair, number 23. I do, I did receive a design proposal for this one, so we're ready to... I do, I did receive a design proposal for this one, so we're ready to sit down and review it and look to see what our best option is moving forward. Number twenty-four, Tuscaloosa Avenue Pedestrian Lighting, this one is in construction, about seventy-five percent complete. Contractor has done his initial work, everything's in place. We need some new services to be set by the power company, and we've made application for those, and so the plan is to turn those on, see what's not lighting up in the other areas, and fix it all at once, but once that occurs, we'll have a good handle on what's going on and what needs to happen to finish that one. Tuscaloosa Avenue Retaining Wall Repair, I do have the completed design from our structural engineer consultant that I work with, and I'm currently preparing bid documents to begin this advertisement. Number twenty-six, Locust Street Railroad Patching Project, that one was complete. If you've ridden down through it, the panels are gone, so we did replace that with the heavy binder, the asphalt that we have in blocks in the past. In the long run, it'll certainly be to our benefit to do more work on that roadway, want to resurface it, but we also have some sidewalk curb and go-to work, so that'll be a larger project in the future that we'll need to plan for. And finally, I stopped with the Wall Street Lighting Repairs. Alabama Power has also ordered these materials. They will complete this one in-house, this is an agreement that the council passed, I guess it was late spring, off the top of my head, but materials are ordered, as soon as those come in, they'll complete that work as well.
Okay.
Any questions?
Hey Heath, I'm number twenty-two. Who's responsible for hauling that stuff off around back there, what I call it, the courtyard? There's probably three or four dump truck loads of stuff out there. I was by there yesterday.
I saw that, yes, sir. So right now, anything that remains in the building, when we put the actual construction project out, it'll be part of the contract for the demolition to occur, so as it currently stands, anything that had to be abated was removed by our abatement contractor. Anything left that remains after that, which from now, until we get to that point, unless we remove it in-house, anything that remains, it will be up to that contractor to haul off, dispose of properly, and vacate it from the side in preparation for new construction.
Wouldn't that be cheaper on us, just take that bars down and go in there and haul that stuff off in that courtyard?
Anything that we can remove helps. Honestly, the mobilization and the mass amounts of debris that we'll have to remove, I don't know how much it would save us, I can't rightly say that it wouldn't save us some, by that point, they'll just essentially look at it by truckload and tonnage, so anything helps.
I'd like, if you'd look at, see if we can just haul that to the landfill, that's a sore in the community right there, all that junk back in the back, and I've been getting calls about people, rats and stuff and all that in there.
Yes, sir.
Everybody could help the neighbors on that, please.
Have you got any estimate on trains when they might be cranked up and ready to go in the fall?
Parks and Rec, so they, right now, we're looking for completion of the tracks October, and so as soon as they're done, we're coordinating with, or Parks and Rec is continuing coordination with our train manufacturer, so as soon as they're set in place, they're scheduled to come in and do the startup for those trains. So I would say late October, I mean, definitely, we've done everything we can to poke and prod and push to say Christmas at the Falls is to occur as it should, otherwise, we're all gonna have to answer a whole lot of questions. And so that is our major push, and I haven't so far seen anything that would limit that.
He's correction, y'all are gonna have to answer some questions.
I will have to answer a lot of questions, excuse me.
So first of all, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You know, this is an outstanding update, we appreciate it, know that a lot of work goes into that. My simple question is, are we in line with the budgeted expense on all of these items?
For the most part, yes, sir. Some are under, some are doing great on, for instance, some of our larger projects, which we obviously watch very closely. I've got a few surprises here and there, I don't have them materialized enough yet that I'm ready to bring them to you. Like any construction project, we'll have some change orders on some. Some are, I should say, the major items, for instance, the Gadsden Sports Park Phase Two, it's in great shape, extremely happy, knock on wood, wherever I can find true wood to knock on. But right now, everything is in line, on schedule, no major surprises with earthwork as we had anticipated, and so resurfacing projects, we've got some change orders there due to the cost of gasoline and oil increasing, that directly affects the cost of asphalt as it's tied to the asphalt index that ALDOT watches, and so it's kind of a big juggling act, but I guess to answer you, some are a little over, some are under, nothing right now is extremely surprising, so the ones that I'm aware are over, we're trying to navigate through that to make sure we handle it appropriately and don't pin ourselves into a corner, so.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Had a couple of questions, and you mentioned gas, I'm seeing in the news that gas prices are actually falling, so how quick do the paving contractors respond? It seems like they respond pretty quick when it rises, but maybe not so quick when it drops, is that?
Excellent point and question. So what we've seen in the past, there is certainly a lag to it, but understandably, by the time the material chain of events happen, by the time the oil rises or decreases or decreases, for it to materialize into that liquid asphalt, for it to materialize into that plant and their production, and then by the time they resell it in the form of asphalt and all these different methods and avenues it takes, there is a lag. I don't have a direct timeline. Usually, we see, you know, two to three months, and you may see it starting to trickle down a bit. It's much more averaged out, so it's not a direct up and down, it certainly doesn't react as quick as we see the gas stations when we drive down the road.
All right, another question, not to get into any kind of weeds or details, but just comment a little bit about Memorial Bridge or the Broad Street Bridge, that's been a focus, and of course, we've long waited to get it, it's such a focal part of our city.
Absolutely.
It's one of the prettiest bridges probably around, so could you maybe give a little bit of detail about what's gonna happen?
So, yes, sir. Been working on this one for several years, I know it's a focal point of the city, it's been my focal point as well, as far as major infrastructure projects that need to occur, and so quite a long process for design. This is one, rightly so, we wanted our consultants to properly investigate, inspect, go through everything. We have to coordinate with the Department of Transportation on these type of repairs and projects as well. There's a weight ton limit on that bridge, and so navigating that through their correct construction equipment, it adds to that complexity just a bit. We've worked through that, we got an updated estimate, really weren't sure when we started exactly, until the inspections occurred, what our budget would look like, so in previous years, we kind, we set just a million dollars over there, just to give us a good starting point to see, and certainly hoped that it would fall into that. Right now, our estimate's closer to about two-point-seven to three, because of all things combined that we're dealing with on several projects, and so what you'll see is, hopefully we'll get it budgeted into the next cycle. The bridge will obviously have to be taken out of service for a limited amount of time. We would love to, or will decrease that as much as possible, because it's a main thoroughfare that needs to be open as much as possible. But what you'll see is it'll go out of service for a while, the existing asphalt on the bridge will be completely removed, we'll go back with another cementitious type material. There's a newer process that we use on bridges, again, I'm sorry, I know I get into the weeds, but there's a pretty cool engineering thing, or activity that will happen, we call hydroblasting, and so it will remove any unsound material, so we can go back and fix that top deck. We're not just assuming we need to take out large sections, we'll actually, it's like a test in real time, and so it removes what needs to be removed, and then we remove and we'll put back new. Obviously, at the same time, we'll fix the understructure, the superstructure, any issues that we see there, any spalling, anything that's cracked and has occurred, so hold your breath just a little while longer, we have a good fix for it, and we're excited to get that one underway, but it will take some patience from the community, to say the least.
Well, that's, you know, what, nineteen-oh-seven, nineteen-oh-five?
Bridge, I've got plans in my office from nineteen-twenty-five.
Nineteen-twenty-five, okay, so it's antique for sure.
Absolutely.
And it sounds like the consultants, that's what they specialize in, is hundred-year-old bridges?
There's not many that specialize in this one, but they are bridge specialists, and so we took our time trying to navigate through even the consultant to use on this one, so we're excited about the process, I am.
Well, thanks, that'll get us set for another hundred years.
We certainly hope so.
So I know most of the talk is structural repairs and conditioning, but cosmetically, it'd be nice if we had some contemporary lighting around our bridge. Is that something, is that possible within the scope of this project?
It's not laid out in this project now, we have our existing lighting, so we're obviously retaining that. In years past, we've looked at some different contemporary lighting, and of course, we have some exterior lighting that washes it like a spotlight from each side or different sides, as you see going on the upstream and downstream side of the river. We've looked at LED options, actually, before we had seen Birmingham's, we went through a pretty nice exercise to see what we could do to our bridge that would complement that, where you could change the colors, and obviously, depending on which members of the structure you want to light up, it gets pretty extensive, but very nice. There's possibility, absolutely. We saw some pretty hefty estimates with that, and so, again, right now, our main focus has been repair of the bridge, then hopefully, personally, I'd love to see that, you know, transition to a long-term project, or to another project to benefit us in the long term in the future.
Okay, thanks, Heath.
Again, thank you, this is twenty-seven projects that we had an update on. One of the things I'd like to note also, when he talked about the Tuscaloosa Avenue Retaining Wall, that's the wall down there near Head Start, which is, really needs to be repaired, because it's a safety issue as far as our children is concerned. So we want to thank you again for all the work that you're doing, so there is life in Gaston, you know, maybe some people can't see it, but there is life in Gaston. At this time, we have a citizen request, Mr. Cole, shortage in police and fire department.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam President, I had intended to give you all the briefcase, but when I realized this council...
Is your mic on? We will...
Okay. When I realized that this council is responsible for the fiscal, budget for the fiscal year twenty-two-three, I come, I have a couple of suggestions and recommendations for you all to consider, you may not, but I want to give them to you. But in reference to the shortage of the police department, we all know that the police department is short of twenty officers, and that's one-fifth of the fours, and there are also ten other officers who was eligible to retire, and then there could be some other changes coming there. And the police officers work anywhere between twelve to sixteen hours a day. The fire department has, I think, a shortage of ten firemen, and there are going to be some more individuals that's not going to be there. And I know there are some members of this council, and maybe all members of the council, feel like when you give a pay raise to the employees, all employees should receive it. But in this particular case, sometimes it depends on the circumstances. I think that the, with my suggestion or recommendation to the council, in the pay raise to the employees this year, just let it go to the fire department and the police department, no department heads, none of the other employees. And you can do this by you, Madam President, and the chairman of the finance committee, letting the citizens know, excuse me, why you are doing what you're going to do, and also the employees. If the police and fire, if the raise goes strictly to the police and fire, that can get them up to a level where they probably need to be. Or if you feel like the police is at the space it should be, then put all that money towards the firefighters, because you have some who are, the morale is low, some of them feel like this council and the city does not care anything about them, and the reason I say that, because I have been told this. But if you do a pay raise to the employees, and you lock in on these two firemen and police officers, when you have, I know all the employees feel like they deserve a raise, and they do, but all of them are not putting out fires and falling in basement and being injured, and you got a police department that goes around, there's guns everywhere in the city, so these individuals are putting their lives on the line. So if you would consider that, and get it over to the employees, that this year, we're going to take care of police and fire, and next year, we're going to take care of the employees. I know the mayor's staff, he has his assistant and the director of personnel and finance is working on this, but you're the ones who was elected to do this budget. You were the one to get the big bucks to make a decision on where this money would go. So I would just like for y'all to consider this, and get them to bring you back some numbers to see as it possible to take care of pay raises for the police and the fire department, but let it be known to the employees, next year, all of the pay raises will go to them and not to the police and fire, and once again, not to the department heads, no reflection on you, because they get a nice pay, most of them get longevity pay, but you need to take care of your employees, because some are getting disgruntled, and they feel like you really don't care, I know you do, but that's how they feel, but I think this would be a big step, or a major step, in trying to claim that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. This time, we'll have a short, short comments from the council. Councilman Reed?
Pass.
Thank you. Councilman Cannon?
I think Mr. Cole was, what he was talking about was this police and fire. I'm not in favor of just giving one group or two groups of people the raises, because we've got people in public works, which I'm the chairman of that public works committee that brings home two-hundred, or two-hundred-and-thirty, forty dollars a week, Mr. Cole. You know, if somebody's got a family, they, you know, their wife has to work, and they gonna have, it's gonna be hard trying to raise those kids. We need to think about all employees, I know the police and fire is very important, but we need to be somewhere where we can get our other employees to pick the garbage up, the trash, public works, our secretaries here at City Hall, people that digs ditches with backhoes, the maintenance people, the people that make sure the city hall's open and closed, the custodians, everybody, because there is, times is hard, and we've, we know how much the inflation rate's gone up, and if we don't give everybody a raise, there's no way we're gonna keep the rest of those employees with us. People picking up garbage won't stay, the people fixing their streets, they won't stay, I mean, you couldn't blame them, I mean, you can go anywhere else, you know, and make more money, but you can't get the benefits the city of Gaston has. The only reason I stayed the twenty-five years was retirement. I didn't work for the money part, actually, because my wife worked, she had a good job, and I stayed twenty-five years, and I made sixteen dollars an hour after twenty-five years. That wasn't no money in those days, you know, back then, but I just think, if one person gets a raise, we all, they all need to get a raise.
Councilman Wilson?
I just want to say something in general that's on my heart about, it's election season, and it's really, it's frustrating for me to see what people do, citizens and candidates, when you're asking people to vote for you, and all I ask is that everybody just try to keep a level head, and I include myself in that. I've lost my temper a couple of times over issues that are related to campaigning, and it's just, we're all human beings, and we're all up here trying to do what's best for this community, and if somebody, that's all it is, and it's nothing more than that. So I just ask everybody to take a deep breath and realize that we live in little old Gaston, Alabama. I can't do anything about Republicans or Democrats in Washington, D.C., I can't do anything about national politics, or what party you're involved in, or anything like that. I just came up here and tried to pave the roads and fill some potholes, and I'm gonna make a promise to this community that I'll take a deep breath, and I'll try to keep my composure, and I think it'd be best if everybody else did too, and let's just get through this thing. That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Beck?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to echo the thanks to Heath Williamson and the Engineering Department, twenty-seven projects that are currently active, we didn't get a dollar amount on that, but I know it's substantial, and so it's, there are some really positive things happening in our city, and a lot of it starts in the Engineering Department, such diligence of having to do all the work that nobody sees, and it takes long, I was thinking about South Eleventh Street, just all the different entities that you've mentioned, the power company, the water company, the Spire, the gas company, all those lines have to be moved, and I guess you just don't do that overnight, that's a big process, and they have to do their measurements, and they have to figure out where it's gonna go, the purchase of the easements and the properties, and it has taken a long time, and I drive that road from time to time, and it does, it is bumpy, and I think that's a known fact, but it's, to do it right and to do it responsibly with tax dollars, you have to jump through certain levels of hoops, and it just, it slows things down. That's one thing I've learned, I think, from serving on the city council, so thank you, Heath, for all the work that you and your staff are doing, and the consultants, and it is, it's... and it is, it's very enlightening to see this list and to see what is actually happening in our city. There's some really good things going on for infrastructure, for entertainment, for just the general well-being of the city of Gaston, just general maintenance, just a whole mix of all of that put together of what we're doing here today of what you talked about. So, thanks a lot for what you're doing. And the budget process has started, and I see Ms. Roster in the back of the room, and I agree with Councilman Williams' assessment in the pre-council meeting. We just have to let that run its course, and we can have our input at the proper time, and there already has been input. We've had meetings. I think all of us have met privately with Ms. Roster in the mayor's office to pontificate for what we want and what we think that needs to happen. And then, you know, sometimes it happens, and most of the time, it doesn't. So, you know, just be honest about it. It's, but it's a tried and true process, some 246 or 7 years of how we do government in, not in Gaston, but in the United States. You know, we're in a mayor council former government. The mayor's office brings the budget in conjunction with the finance director, and the council gets to approve it. And we have input, and we all have to be together on one page. And I think some years, you get what you want, and other years, you don't. And hopefully, at the end of one term, it kind of evens out, that maybe you kind of have a few victories in there. But, I thought, the whole time, I think all of us are trying to do what's best for the city of Gaston and for the citizens of Gaston. So, excited for this process to begin in earnest this summer and look forward to completing it. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, Council, Councilman Worthy? You want me to give you a time limit?
No, I'm just gonna make an announcement. Job fair, August the 10th, the venue, from 9 to 1. Job fair, August the 10th, at the venue, from 9 to 1 o'clock. Please, if you're looking for a job, if you got a job and want a better job, come on over and check us out, in conjunction with Career Center. Also, the Career Center has a lot of different programs where they're paid for you to go to Gaston State to get a skill. There's that skill job I'm talking about. So, and you won't have student loan payments. So, please go by the Career Center and check it out. Because we have several job openings right now that people will not take, for whatever reason. So, we need you. Revenue has been declining since December. So, we need you to go to work, Gaston, please. Thank you.
Councilman William?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick things as it relates to the budget process. Thank you, Councilman Beck, for kind of bringing that up again. But, it's important that we remember that there are folks that are working diligently as they typically do this time of year, going through the budget exercise. And, you know, it's quite easy for an elected official and even a member of our electorate to just throw out, hey, we need to, we need to do this, or we need to, or we ought to. But, the reality is, there are, there's quite a bit of analysis that has to be done to determine, one, how we can impact external candidates, because obviously, with some of the shortages in departments, we need to be appealing to people on the outside. Existing employees, we've got people that are considering leaving and, or that are feeling undercompensated, and we need to make sure that we address those issues. And of course, we've got more senior and skilled individuals who we need to retain in order to keep some of that institutional knowledge in place so that things will continue to happen. So, just bear in mind that all of those things are being considered, all those things are being accounted for. And the reality of it is, there'll be a finished product that'll get presented to this council. There'll be a finished product at some point that the mayor and the council will agree on and vote on. And guess what? That finished product is gonna address a lot of issues, but there are gonna be some that it won't address. So, again, I think it just takes us being mature to understand that that's how the process works. And I don't care who's sitting up here, that part of it is not gonna change. You know, there's always gonna be somebody that's gonna feel left out in the budgetary exercise. So, again, I'm excited to get through that. This is an opportunity for us to address some issues, and I think that's how we have to look at it. And I am, I think we're fortunate as a city to be in the financial position to take on some of these challenges, because there are a lot of cities out there who cannot and don't have the wherewithal to do so. So, again, I do appreciate that part. Couple other things. I want to take the opportunity to just publicly, and I may jinx it, and I hope I don't, but Iva Nelson and the city clerk's staff, for as long as I can recall, both in my, in the three terms that I've been an elected official, as well as even preceding that, they have done an outstanding job of managing our election process. They've done an amazing job. And if you could see behind the curtain now, you would see that she's taking some preemptive steps to ensure that our election goes without issues now. Now, again, there's always unforeseen things that pop up. Election Day is pretty emotional, as some of you new candidates will find out. So, and she has to manage every bit of that, and she does so very professionally. And so, I'm really proud of her in that regard, and I look forward to her and her staff doing another commendable job managing this process. So, if you're new to the elect, 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 election process, please reach out to the city clerk's office. They're a great source of information. They're not gonna steer you wrong, and if you'll listen to them, they'll keep you out of trouble. And the last thing I will say is, I hadn't said anything about this in a while, but let's continue. Now's a good time, even with gas prices creeping down a little and things becoming a little bit more affordable, there are still people out there struggling just to meet the day-to-day needs of their families. Continue to take the opportunity where you can to pay it forward. Little things make a difference for a lot of people. So, please continue to pay it forward. That's all I have, Madam President.
Madam President, if I could have one, I don't know how I forgot this. Last Thursday, we had a major announcement at Gaston State Community College for the Advanced Manufacturing Technology Center. It's, that's a real game changer for Gaston and Etowah County, if you haven't read about that. It'll be open in 2024. It's gonna be, there's five in the state, and we, Gaston State was awarded one of those. So, congratulations to Dr. Murphy and to Dean, Dr. Alan Smith, for all the hard work that they put into bringing that to Gaston for make that a reality. It's, we've talked about this particular subject up here many times. It's training our people for the jobs of tomorrow today. And those jobs of tomorrow are already here, and we see it all around us. This is, this is going to really change the face of Etowah County and the face of Gaston. So, congratulations to Gaston State Community College, to Mr. Jimmy Baker, who is the director of the community college system for putting that kind of faith and that kind of money. Some, I think, minimum $25 million investment is probably gonna wind up being closer to $40 million, and it's going to provide a lot of opportunity for a lot of our citizens here in Gaston and Etowah County. Thank you, Madam President.
As president of the city council and facilitator of this meeting, I believe in things being done decent and in order. So, from this point on, from this council meeting on, I'm asking the council members that if you want to converse with anyone, any constituent, then I'm asking you to vacate this podium, this dais, and you go down and you talk to them and not invite anyone up here to this dais, starting from this point on. In fact, I've asked the, it's not the, it's not the bailiff, parliamentarian, or just the police. If anyone comes up here, I'm asking you to ask them to move. And that goes for, and I said council members, so that goes for me all the way down. But, in order for us to have an effective meeting, in order to us, for us to do things decent and in order, we are adults, and then we want to act that way. And so, I'm asking, requesting, telling you that you need to go down and talk and not invite anybody up here. We have a big announcement, and this is for next Tuesday at 4:30. So, tell everybody, there's gonna be a ribbon cutting at Phase One at the Gaston Parks, Sports Park, and it's gonna be Tuesday, if the weather permits. The Sports Park is located, it says, next to Gaston State Community College, but it's beyond Gaston State Community College, it's near the river. The public is invited, and there's gonna be light refreshments. There're gonna even be a little, probably a soccer game going. So, next Tuesday, tell everybody to come. If you don't know where the park is, I believe there'll be directions, but it's by Gaston State, and you'll see that it is one of the state-of-the-art parks that's being developed, and you will enjoy it. If there's not...
What time, Madam President?
4:30, 4:30. Starts at 4:30, if the weather permits. Now, if it's raining real hard, I don't think it'll happen. But, if not, then you're welcome to come. Tell everybody about it. If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.